Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 25th, 2018 conference meeting. We are going to start off with the Administrator's Report. Oh, sorry, we're going to start off with the Road Call.
Freeholder John Bartlett, Best Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazara. All right, may I have a moment? Sure, Director, the only thing on my conference agenda is the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. I believe, are you going to be, are you the master of service?
Yes, so.
All right, I'll take it away.
Thank you. Yeah, tonight's a very special night. This month, though, we celebrate Hispanic.
The whole I want to call the Director for a second. I'm a dual decision. Me.
Working very well.
Go ahead. Take two.
Okay. But we're here to acknowledge and celebrate our civic, social, and cultural organizations, and the people within those organizations that reach out to their peers and to our community to make us even more appreciative of everything that our Hispanic and Latino communities bring to our lives. And this is especially good or sweet because we are recognizing someone tonight who was a very good friend to all of us, well-loved, and I have that honor to present to the family, not only this picture, which is too heavy to fit up here, that's why it's not up there, but also a resolution honoring Councilwoman Zaida Polanco from Passaic. You know, sometimes people don't understand that, even though we're all elected officials, our relationships go a lot deeper than that. And if for a minute anybody doesn't think that we don't only work together, we actually are friends. And losing Zaida hit us all very hard. I mean, a week before, I was with Zaida, and we actually went to get our makeup done together. And she is just the happiest person that I could ever know. And it would be negligent of us not to recognize Zaida this month, and just think of her and the memories that she brought to all of us. I would like to call her family, and I'm not talking just about her blood family, but her Passaic family, to come on up for a few minutes, because I want to read this proclamation, and then I want to give you a chance to just talk to everyone here about Zaida and the kind of person she was and her accomplishments and how much she meant to all of us. So if you could come on up. I'm going to just read this, and then I want, I'd like to hear from her family. "So whereas the nation is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2018 through October 15th, 2018, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by the exceptional, many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize our dear friend and colleague, Zaida Polanco. So whereas the late Councilwoman, Zaida Polanco immigrated to the United States from the Dominican Republic in 1990 and settled in the city of Passaic with her family, she attended Passaic Public Schools and graduated from Passaic High School, she continued her education at Moncler State University, where she earned her bachelor's degree, and attended Rutgers University, where she got a master's degree in political science. Whereas Councilwoman Zaida Polanco was first elected to public office in 2010 as a Commissioner of the City of Passaic Board of Education, she was elected Councilwoman-at-Large to the City Council of the City of Passaic in 2011, and was re-elected in 2015. And whereas Councilwoman Zaida Polanco also served the City of Passaic as a Director of Human Resources for the City of Passaic Board of Education, and whereas Councilwoman Zaida Polanco tragically passed away at the age of 41 on August 2, 2018. Whereas Councilwoman Zaida Polanco was a tireless advocate for the rights of those who did not have a voice." That's so much like her. Wow. "She was a truly dedicated public servant and leader within the City of Passaic. And whereas in recognition of her service to the community, the City Council and Mayor of the City of Passaic posthumously honored the late Councilwoman by designating the quarter Broadway and Paulson Avenue as Councilwoman Zaida Polanco Way, and renamed the reception area of the Wood Building in her memory. So now therefore let be proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic hereby proudly applauds and acknowledges the numerous achievements that the late Zaida Polanco has made and for her service to this community. She will be sorely missed." I also have here, on behalf of the New Jersey Legislature, a citation, which Senator Poe, do you want to come on up and read?
Sure.
I would love to have you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, Madam President, and to all the members of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. First of all, let me just say that if I'm in with your permission and with the permission of all the freeholders, let me point out that today, as it was mentioned, we are, we're doing two things, right? We're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month because of all the incredible people that reflect the rich culture and the diversity of our city, our county, our great state, and this great nation. With that being, we're, we have such wonderful individuals of our Hispanic heritage, our Hispanic population. Among them was a young woman, as has been mentioned, the late Councilwoman of Zaida Polanco. Zaida had a permanent smile, every single time. Anyone who knew her, not only was she beautiful in the outside, but she was absolutely beautiful in the inside. She was a great, great person, someone who we all, I personally, enjoyed her company, laughed with her, smiled. We sometimes cried over some of the, some of the campaign things that were, you know, at the event. I remember my days when I was going to the City of Passaic to work very closely with her on a number of different projects. So she is remembered today for the beautiful person and soul that she was. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment, and I so appreciate this, Madam President, for allowing me to say a few words on behalf of all the honorees, but especially to the Councilwomen. It, you know, this, this citation really doesn't reflect everything that the Councilwoman Zaida Polanco, our friend, our sister, really meant to all of us, but it's in a small way just recognizing and giving tribute to her great time here in life with us. She is certainly in heaven today, looking down, down upon us all and saying, gee, you know, I wish I was there with all of you, but I am smiling still today, and we know that our hearts are with her. So with that being said, I have prepared an extended general citation, its commendations and praise are extended, to Zaida Polanco, posthumor, uh, humorous, laid by the Citizenry of the 35th New Jersey Legislature's District through their elected representative, as a woman of character determination and enterprise whose efforts brought pride and distinction to the County of Passaic and this state, and earned her recognition as a 2018 Hispanic Heritage Month Honoree by the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, who salute her and her family for her outstanding leadership and citizenship. And I know while she is not here to receive this, that she is not here to hear these words, I know that she knows that in our hearts we mean every word of it because she was truly loved and will always be remembered by all of us. Signed by myself as your state senator, along with my two colleagues, Assemblywoman Shabana Supta and Assemblyman Benjou Wimberly, I want to take a moment to express my sincere, sincere condolences to the family, because we know what a great loss it is to you, to your family, and to her extended family, because I know that no one loved her more and knew her best than Mayor Hector Laura and all of the Passaic family residents. So God bless you, and thank you, thank you very much. In that, I present that to you. Madam President, without taking too much liberty, I would just say, if I may, just give also my sincere congratulations and salute to all the other honorees that we have here today. Kathy Esciche, a dynamic, incredible young woman that we're also very proud of. God bless you. Congratulations. We certainly want to recognize your great effort. And to the dynamics, fantastic and unbelievable, talented, our Deputy Superintendent Susie Perron, who is here with many of her colleagues and friends and our superintendent, Ivy Schaefer and others. So congratulations to you, and of course, to the United Forward Leaping Council, an organization that I know all too well and the wonderful work that you all do. God bless you. Thank you. I'll stop right there. Thank you for giving me that leverage. Thank you. [applause]
Happy Polanco, our former Councilwoman Zaida Polanco, was asked that I say a few words on their behalf. I would say on behalf of the family, we're so grateful, appreciative, touched over not just this gesture, but what it means that on record, our accomplishments and our significance to our city and our county will be forever remembered. That if ever anyone ever looks up this particular meeting day, they will be able to open up the agenda and know that the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders recognize the work and the commitment to service of Councilwoman Zaida Polanco, as well as the recognition that came from Senator Natalie Poe. Know that her father, Marino, her mother, Isabella, and her sister, Stira, Natalie, also expressed that same gratitude impersonally. I grew up knowing the Polanco family. Zaida's sister was my sister's best friend growing up. I used to spend more time in her house than after school than where else. Me and her father, the same physicians who we all talked. I ran in 2011 with Zaida, we often spoke on the weekends. Outside of politics, as most relationships in politics go, we have this sort of dichotomy to it, there's the political part and there's the personal part. Zaida was a remarkable official and representative. She was a much more caring person than anyone knew. She was the kind of person that used money to help those who didn't have, who always offered to pay for anyone who was around and welcomed each person with an amazing smile with open arms, a great deal of warmth and compassion. As I look around, and representatives from the school board, like Rachel, Assistant Superintendent, who's here to support her, her colleagues who saw her every single day, and everyone said the same thing about her. She was warm and caring. She always tried to help people. Sometimes to a fault, we would say, she never knew how to say no, it was always, let me see what I can do. I'll try. I joke, even on that very sad day, to the family, that when I became a Freeholder, Freeholder Best let me know on every day after that I was his second favorite elected official from Passaic, and always reminded me, and when he saw Zaida, that she was the first. In fact, I remember when he found out I was going to be a Freeholder, he said, oh, I was hoping for Zaida, but I think you'll do a good job. And she knew that, and she always got a great laugh at that and enjoyed it so much, and I remember how much she supported each and every one of us. Councilwoman Amy Patel, who actually began his political career with Councilwoman Polanco, and I had the pleasure to run with her. In 2011, Rick Fernandez, our business administrator, has known her as well as I, many years before politics. We stand together as a family. We stand together with the Polanco family, recognizing her, acknowledging her, and again, I'll reiterate, expressing our sincerest and deepest gratitude to the Board of Chosen Freeholders for taking time to acknowledge her. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
And if you take a look at this picture, you'll see she's smiling like every picture. It's amazing. Should we take a picture? Come on, guys.
Please do.
I'm Freeholder John Bartlett.
Please do.
It's my privilege to deliver this next proclamation, and due to that, I want to invite my colleague, Freeholder TJ Best, to join me. If you notice a theme in looking at today's program, it is education, and in fact, throughout this year of 2018, we are focusing on educators as we go through the year and recognize the many communities that contribute to Passaic County and all that this place has to offer. What's wonderful about that is it's also an opportunity to recognize so many success stories of people who did not only achieve remarkable things in their own lives, but also are creating that next generation of achievers here at Passaic County. And with that as a preface, I want to ask Susanna Perron to come on up and join us. [applause] I'm going to read it. It's telling me I gotta read it. Of course I'm gonna read it. This is the best part. As I said, we get to recognize people not only for what they've done in achieving in their own life, but what they do for so many others. And my gosh, Susanna, each time I read your bio, I feel all the more that that's true. So let me just read this into the record. "Whereas our nation is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th, 2018, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Susanna A. Perron. And whereas..." I tell you, Susie, I gotta read the whole thing. Your name goes over and over again. Can I please, Susie?
Absolutely.
Okay. "Whereas Susie Perron, whose parents immigrated to the United States from Cuba, was born at Patterson, attended William Patterson University, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Psychology and Elementary Education with a concentration in early childhood. She earned a Master's Degree in Bilingual Bicultural Studies and a Master's Degree in Administration and Leadership from New Jersey City University, and she is pursuing a Doctorate in Curriculum and Instruction from Northeastern University and is a member of Kappa Delta Pi. And whereas Susie Perron began her career as an instructional assistant at Patterson Public School 18, and during her tenure in the Patterson Public Schools, she has served in many capacities, including bilingual teacher, preschool master teacher, early childhood development, early childhood department supervisor, early childhood department director, and in 2011 was promoted to Assistant Superintendent, and in 2013 to Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services and Special Programs, and in 2017, she became the first Hispanic Deputy Superintendent in Patterson Public School history. And whereas Susie Perron spearheaded several programs for the Patterson School District, including helping to develop a newcomer at middle school at School 11, a gifted and talented academy at School 28, and an international baccalaureate or IB program at the International High School. And whereas Susie Perron has served on various state and local committees to develop concepts for curriculum facilities and assessment practices in education, sat on the NJ Department of Education Committee to assist the writing of the kindergarten implementation guidelines, and has participated in a variety of leadership institutes in conjunction with agencies such as William Patterson University and Harvard University, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic hereby proudly applauds and acknowledges the numerous achievements that Susanna A. Perron has made, and thanks her for her service to this community."
I told her she's got to wait. One time I told you to wait. I also wanted to just say a couple of words about my boss, Susanna Perron. I met Susie when, actually, I knew her for a while, but we got to know each other when I was on the Board of Education before I became a Freeholder. At that time, she was actually a supervisor of early childhood education. And immediately, I was like, why is she only a supervisor? She's a rock star. I remember talking to the superintendent, anytime that there was an opening, saying that, we gotta get Susie up, we gotta get Susie up, we gotta get Susie up, to the point that she did become the Director, and there was an opening for an Assistant Superintendent's position. And I remember again saying, I don't think you have any other choice, but before we went there, I asked Susie, and I said, Susie, you know, there's an opening coming up, and I think that you'll be great, everybody agrees with me, I really think that it's time for you to do more. And she was like, well, you know, I like standing in the background, I don't really like the credit, I love what I'm doing right now, I love working with the younger kids, I love what I'm doing, and she was doing an amazing job. Our early childhood education program is one of the best programs I've always seen in the entire state of New Jersey. Both my kids have gone through it, and, you know, she really was passionate about it. And it came to a point where I was like, well, if you don't take it, this person is going to be your boss. And she said, I can't have that happen. Sign me up. But since she's been there, and now especially as Deputy Superintendent Number Two to our Superintendent, Ivy Schaefer, she's been a rock star. Together, this dynamic duo of phenomenal women have really taken our school district to great heights, and I'm so proud to be a part of the Patterson Public School family, and I'm so proud to call both of these women my bosses. Congratulations to them.
Susie, I also want to acknowledge Senator Poe provided a proclamation from the Senate and Assembly as well for you, Susie Perron, this evening. Please.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I am humbled and honored to receive and to be recognized by the Freeholders today and the Senator, to do what I love most, and that is to service the children of Patterson. Being a child raised in Patterson, I truly love this community, I truly love my city, and I could not be anywhere else. And so I am honored to be here, and as Freeholder TJ Best said, I love to just work, I love to just service my children and the staff here. I'm proud of, you know, what we have done and working under the leadership of my superintendent, Ms. Schaefer. I think that, you know, we are only going to see so much more success for our children, which they so do deserve. I want to thank my family, I want to thank my mom and my dad and my grandmother, who was my rock, right, who always told me to believe in what I do and who I am, and to take what I bring and to share it with the world. And that's the message that I send to our kids, too, because there is strength in diversity, and that's what makes Patterson and this city so beautiful, that we are all so different, and we bring all so much to the table, and our children bring that to the classroom. So I want to thank you all, and again, I am humbled, only to do what I love to do, so I am blessed. Thank you.
[applause] Well, guys, Ms. Caddaskiche, please join me up here. It's an honor. So it's my great honor to honor our good friend, Ms. Caddaskiche. "Whereas our nation is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2018 through October 15th, 2018, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Caddaskiche. Whereas Caddaskiche was born in Queens, New York, but left to live in Peru for eight years, and upon his return to the U.S., her family settled in the city of Patterson, where she was placed in a bilingual program which helped her succeed academically. Whereas Caddaskiche graduated from Merry Help of Christians Academy and went on to earn a Bachelor's Degree in Anthropology from William Patterson University, a Master's of Urban Education from New Jersey City University, and completed an East Asian Studies Consortium at Princeton University. And whereas in April 20, April 2002, with just the difference of seven votes, Caddaskiche became the first proven American to be elected to the office in the state of New Jersey, and in 2014, government policy appointed her to the New Jersey Human Relations Council Executive Committee. And whereas most recent Caddaskiche was selected by Patterson Mayor Andres Saya to serve in his transition team as co-chair of the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Committee, and whereas she's currently a member of various civic and social organizations and four-term director for the statewide program parade, and whereas her full-time job, she works as a supervisor of bilingual English as a Second Language, ESL, and for World Language Department for Patterson Public School, and as an adjunct professor of ESL, and whereas with her extensive network, she is actively involved in political campaigns and will entirely ensure that those candidates who put community first continue to get elected. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic hereby proudly applauds and announces the numerous achievements that Caddaskiche has made and for her service to the community. Congratulations." I just want to say personally that it's truly, I think, an inspiration for the children you teach, your background, where you came from, and the fact that you overcame some of those same hurdles that you were there trying to push them to achieve it. So that's an amazing thing, and I'm grateful for your friendship and all the support that you've shown all of us as a Freeholder. Congratulations. Please.
Thank you, Freeholders. Good afternoon, everyone. I am both honored and humbled to receive this recognition. Truly honored, because I am sharing this evening with someone who will always be dear to my heart, an angel by the name of Zaida Polanco, who epitomized the American dream. Just like Zaida, I was an immigrant girl who went through the bilingual program. I know firsthand how crucial it is to feel a sense of security in the school you attend. This is why I must acknowledge two great things that are happening in Passaic County. Just recently, the City of Passaic has just named...
And it is great to offer this to students, and within the next year, we're going to offer it to high school students, and to guarantee that they graduate, because America is their home now, and we're not going to allow them to fail. So, once again, thank you, freeholders. No, I think each of you is my personal friend. Thank you so much, and I just want to acknowledge my family, Mayor Laura, and all my friends that are here this evening. Thank you.
In there for the fourth, the number five on the list tonight is actually a group of people who I've come to know very well. Thank you, Mayor Laura, for introducing me to the United Puerto Rican Council of the City of Passaic. I've been to your, I guess, headquarters multiple times, and last was one of your, you honored Korean War veteran with a medal along with Senator Poe, and we were so happy to be there. But what I love about the council is that you embrace everybody, but especially you support the members of your community in so many different ways. And you give out scholarships, I know that, disaster relief, you have educational opportunities, seminars for housing and financial activities, but you also have a baseball team, which Mayor Laura, I don't know, what was that, three years ago, when we were on the back of one of their shirts? It was like so cool, I was wearing that shirt the other day, I love it. But, you know, the United Puerto Rican Council embraces their heritage and their culture, and they share that with all of us, and what a wonderful culture it is. I'm so honored to be able to present this resolution to you, and I'd ask you if you would please come on up. I want to read this. And I know just three years ago, you were honored here when Mayor Laura was a freeholder, but this is a special year for you, right? Fortyth anniversary?
Yes.
Yeah, so when I was, when I was at your location, back when you gave the gentleman his Medal of Honor, remember? And I said to you, "We are going to recognize this, because it's such a great opportunity to do this." So if you just bear with me for a minute, I'd love to read this out loud for everybody. Whereas our nation is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize the United Puerto Rican Council. And whereas the United Puerto Rican Council was founded in nineteen seventy-eight on the vision that was born from a group of Puerto Rican citizens who faced the need to establish a place where its community could meet for the purposes of strengthening its culture through education, civil, and social events. And whereas the United Puerto Rican Council is celebrating its fortieth anniversary this year. And whereas the motto of the United Puerto Rican Council is, "Together we become stronger." That's really nice. And whereas the United Puerto Rican Council sponsors a scholarship program and is active in community service activities, including get well baskets for St. Joe's patients, hygiene baskets for the orphanage, Christmas baskets for senior citizens, Thanksgiving baskets for the homeless, and cooking for senior citizens. And whereas the United Puerto Rican Council participates in donations to fire victims, coat drives, and toy drives, and it supports causes such as the Autism Walk and Cancer Awareness Campaigns. So, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic hereby proudly applauds and acknowledges the numerous achievements that the United Puerto Rican Council has made and for its service to the community. We do appreciate you so much and everything you do. I would invite you to the floor. A citation? Do you? I like to share. So the citation reads as follows, it says, "From the State of New Jersey, Senate and General Assembly Citation, commendations and praise are extended to the United Puerto Rican Council by the citizenry of the thirty-fifth New Jersey Legislative District through their elected representatives. As an organization of character, determination, and enterprise whose efforts have brought pride and distinction to the County of Passaic and this state, and has earned the United Puerto Rican Council recognition as a two thousand and eighteen Hispanic Heritage Month honorary by the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, we salute you on your outstanding leadership and citizenship, and signed by both myself and my two colleagues." Congratulations. I know your organization very well, you are an amazing, amazing organization. Congratulations.
Thank you. This was a really great night. On behalf of the United Puerto Rican Council, we'd like to say thank you to the Board of Chosen Freeholders for acknowledging the work that we do, do it with love and passion for the people of Passaic County, and our people, and everybody. Thank you.
This is great. I feel like we're all a big family. Come on over, let's take a picture.
Come on, Passaic.
I'd just like to mention that there's a lot of food downstairs, so if you don't, you don't really have to stay for those meetings, so.
Or you can stay, we can go eat.
Okay.
Review of the content agenda.
You can do a review of the content agenda, you know, the announcement of the open public view. Oh, yeah, do you know what starts?
Madam Director, through you to the board, we are proposing here two late starters. K thirty-seven is a resolution authorizing a donation of a surplus trailer no longer used by the Passaic County Parks Department, it's in front of the Rock Bay Park. And we've also got a late starter, K thirty-eight, resolution authorizing a grant application to New Jersey Department of Transportation Bike Race Grant Program for Lakeview Avenue Bike Path Project. No, no, Madam Director, however, we are requesting that the board permit an amendment to K thirty-six, which is the last item on your agenda, to include the grant sage number. That's a resolution for the Safe Streets Program in the township of West Milford. The resolution, your packet, does not have the sage number on it, so we need to add that, so we propose that K thirty-six be amended to include that. And there is no need, Madam Director, for a secondary session.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Field of Doctor?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Yes, did he say yes? And the Director Lizarron?
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Notice of Requirement to Legal Public Meeting Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the law.
Field of Doctor?
Present.
Bartlett?
Here.
Best?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Deputy Director James?
Here.
Director Lizarron?
Here.
If I could, could I ask Mayor Laura to do the allocation?
If you don't mind, Mayor, can you click the camera right here into it?
You have three minutes.
Blessed are you, Lord, King of the universe, Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you for this opportunity where the Board of Chosen Freeholders may come together to make decisions to vote on certain policies and to affect the lives of the residents of this great county. We ask, Lord, that you would indulge them with wisdom, compassion, and insight, to do so in a way that honors you and would always keep in mind every single resident of this great county. Lord, we ask that you bless them, bless their families, and bless all of us, and we ask that you bless the food downstairs that everyone will eat, and we thank you for this very special program, as we recognize individuals who continue to make an impact in all our communities, and remember the memory and legacy of those that have gone on before us. We pray all this in your precious name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States of America?
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of September eleven?
Two minutes. Field of Bartlett?
Yes.
Field of Doctor?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lizarron?
Yes.
If I could, could I ask Mayor Laura to do the allocation?
If you don't mind, Mayor, can you click the camera right here into it?
You have three minutes.
Please, by the way. Blessed are you, Lord, King of the universe, Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you for this opportunity where the Board of Chosen Freeholders may come together to make decisions to vote on certain policies and to affect the lives of the residents of this great county. We ask, Lord, that you would indulge them with wisdom, compassion, and insight, to do so in a way that honors you and would always keep in mind every single resident of this great county. Lord, we ask that you bless them, bless their families, and bless all of us, and we ask that you bless the food downstairs that everyone will eat, and we thank you for this very special program, as we recognize individuals who continue to make an impact in all our communities, and remember the memory and legacy of those that have gone on before us. We pray all this in your precious name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States of America?
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of September eleven?
Two minutes. Field of Bartlett?
Yes.
Field of Doctor?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lizarron?
Yes.
So, our Director of Art, Partner, Sharleen, you know, the cooperation with Susan G. Coleman Foundation, and of course, us, the Chosen Freeholders, is having Women's Wellness Expo on September twenty-ninth from ten to four P.M. This is a very important event for women from all over the county. Sharleen has arranged to have buses driving through the county to pick up any women that want to come to the Wellness Expo, and everything there is going to be free. So, what, you know, I guess the whole concept of this is that no matter where you live, okay, you are supposed to be, have access to great health care, and sometimes that doesn't always happen to some people, for whatever reason. The quality of health care that every woman deserves. The Susan G. Coleman Foundation not only raises awareness for breast cancer studies, but they also look at healthy lifestyle, because healthy lifestyles affect women and some diseases they might get. So, Sharleen's worked very hard on this, I know that. We invite you, if you know anybody, if you drive yourself, that's great, too, but please take advantage of this. There's going to be doctors here, there's going to be free health screenings, you're going to be able to talk to professionals in the field about anything that might concern you, there's going to be a Kid Zone, a fitness and active lifestyle seminar, there's special guests and vendors. It's going to be a great opportunity for women to get access to great health care. So if you yourself want to go, or you know anyone who wants to go, if you want to know the schedule of the buses that will be picking women up from around the county, from top to bottom, we have all that available to you, and if you have any questions, you can actually call Sharleen's office to find out, like, "Well, what's the bus going to be in my neighborhood?" Sharleen, what's the phone number? Nine seven three eight eight one four three nine six is the phone number. So you, huh? Eight eight one four three nine six. But no, it's a great opportunity for women to get that access to the health care that they might need, or not otherwise have the opportunity to access. So I invite all women to please attend.
Okay, Director, I have a report from Campo, it is numbers, it might turn, or anybody else? I don't want, I don't have a stage for you.
No, no, no.
Sure? We have, we, Campo serviced two thousand five hundred and twenty-three students this summer, and four hundred and forty-one counselors, and a hundred and thirty-one seniors. We're having a plan for the purveyance being done, we have a couple of legal problems going on, but nothing insurmountable, so it should be done by next year. And just a report that we did meet with West Milford about a possible sidewalk project going on, so a lot to be done before that, but that'd be a great project beneficial to all in West Milford.
Anybody else?
Field of Director, I wanted to report to the board that many of you know that I've been working in the South Patterson neighborhood where I live, the Lakeview section, that Lakeview Avenue, which is a county road, I've been working for, since I've become a freeholder, I've heard from many of my neighbors who live in the area, who were telling me about cars that were going on. Lakeview Avenue, which is a four-lane road in a residential area on the Patterson side of Lakeview Avenue, where cars were speeding, driving up onto people's lawns, even hitting homes, damage on the homes. We looked up the accident reports, and it was pretty astounding in terms of number of accidents. The fact was, it was astounding to me that no fatalities or serious injuries had occurred those accidents occurred. Unfortunately, so we'd worked on a plan to, to, as Field of Bartlett's worked in many parts of the county and others have worked, to potentially reduce the lanes on Lakeview Avenue from four down to two, and also be able to use that extra space for positive recreational opportunities. But what I wanted to report on today was that unfortunately, last Friday night, a woman, a pedestrian in her sixties, lost her life on the Clifton side of Lakeview Avenue trying to cross the street. A young driver struck her. I don't have the report from the prosecutor's office, and I don't want to in any way speculate as to why that accident occurred, but it was a section of Lakeview Avenue in that part of the Clifton side where there wasn't a marked crosswalk, or any kind of, and I can tell, real visibility.
As an organization of character determination and enterprise whose efforts have brought pride and distinction to County of Passaic and this state and has earned the United Puerto Rican Council recognition as a 2018 Hispanic Heritage Honorary by the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, we salute you on your outstanding leadership and citizenship and signed by both myself and my two colleagues. Congratulations on the organization very well. You are an amazing, amazing organization. God bless you.
Thank you.
This is a really great night.
On behalf of the United Puerto Rican Council, we like to say thank you to the Board of Chosen Freeholders for acknowledging the work that we do. We do it with love and passion for our people, for the people of Passaic County and our people and everybody. Thank you.
This is great. I feel like we're all a family. We want to take a picture.
I'd just like to mention that there's a lot of food downstairs, so if you don't, you
don't really have to stay for those meetings.
Or you could stay with Joey.
Okay.
Review of the consent agenda.
You can do review of the consent agenda. We announced where the open public meeting law. Oh, yes. Do you know what starters?
Madam Director, through you to the board. We are proposing two late starters. K-37 is a resolution authorizing a donation of a surplus trailer no longer used by the Passaic County Parks Department to the Rockford Park. And we've also got a late starter, K-38, resolution authorizing a grant application to New Jersey Department of Transportation Bike Ways Grant Program for Lakeview Avenue Bike Path Project. No, no, Madam Director. However, we are requesting that the board implement an amendment to K-36, which is the last item on your agenda, to include the grant sage number. That's a resolution for the Safe Streets Program in the township of West Milford. The resolution or packet does not have the sage number on it, so we need to add that, so we would propose that K-36 be amended. Include that. And there's going to be, Madam Director, for the second session.
Rilda Zocker?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
And the Director Lozara?
Yes.
I didn't hear you. Ladies and gentlemen, the notice of requirement of the open public meeting law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the law. Rilda Zocker?
Present.
Bartlett?
Here.
Best?
Here.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozara?
Here.
If I could, could I ask Mayor Lord, who is here, to do the invocation?
If you don't mind, Mayor, can you please stand right here in the room?
You have three minutes.
For old times.
Please bow your head.
Blessed are you, Lord, King of the universe, creator of heaven and earth. We thank you for this opportunity where the Board of Chosen Freeholders may come together to make decisions, to vote on certain policies, and to affect the lives of the residents of this great county. We ask, Lord, that you would indulge them with wisdom, compassion, and insight to do so in a way that honors you and would always keep in mind every single resident of this great county. Lord, we ask that you bless them, bless their families, and bless all of us, and we ask that you bless the food downstairs that everyone will eat, and we thank you for this very special program as we recognize individuals who continue to make an impact in all our communities and remember the memory and legacy of those that have gone out before us. We pray all this in your precious name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States of America. Thank you. Now, a motion to approve the minutes of September 11th.
Who'll be it? Rilda Bartlett? Rilda Zocker?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozara?
So, our director of our department, Pat Shirley, in cooperation with the Susan G. Coman Foundation and of course, us, the Chosen Freeholders, is having a women's wellness expo on September 29th from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is a very important event for women from all over the county. Shirley has arranged to have buses driving through the county to pick up any women that want to come to the wellness expo, and everything there is going to be free. So, what, you know, I guess the whole concept of this is that no matter where you live, okay, you are supposed to be, have access to great health care, and sometimes that doesn't always happen to some people for whatever reason. The quality of health care that every woman deserves. The Susan G. Coman Foundation not only raises awareness for breast cancer studies, but they also look at healthy lifestyles because healthy lifestyles affect women and some diseases they might get. So, Shirley's worked very hard on this, I know that. We invite you, if you know anybody, if you drive yourself, that's great too, but please take advantage of this. There's going to be doctors here, there's going to be free health screenings, you're going to be able to talk to professionals in the field about anything that might concern you, there's going to be a Kid Zone, a fitness and active lifestyle seminar, there's special guests and vendors. It's going to be a great opportunity for women to get access to great health care. So, if you yourself want to go, or you know anyone who wants to go, if you want to know the schedule of the buses that will be picking women up from around the county from top to bottom, we have all that available to you, and if you have any questions, you can actually call Shirley's office to find out like, well, what's a bus going to be in my neighborhood? Shirley, what's the phone number? 973-881-4396 is the phone number. So, you, huh? 881-4396. But no, it's a, it's a great opportunity for women to get that access to the home care that they might need or not otherwise have the opportunity to access. So, I invite all women to please attend.
Okay, Director, I have a report from Campo. It is numbers in my turn or anybody else? I don't want, I don't have stage information.
No, no, no.
Sure? We have, we, Campo serviced 2,523 students this summer and 441 counselors and 131 seniors. We're having a plan for the purveyance being done. We have a couple of legal problems, but nothing is amenable, so it should be done by next year. And just a report that we did meet with West Milford about a possible sidewalk project coming on, so a lot to be done before that, but that'd be a great project beneficial to all in West Milford.
Would anybody else?
Freeholder Director, I wanted to report to the board that many of you know that I've been working in the South Patterson neighborhood where I live, the Lakeview section, that Lakeview Avenue, which is a county road, I've been working for, since I've become a freeholder, I've heard from many of my neighbors who live in the area who were telling me about cars that were going on Lakeview Avenue, which is a four-lane road in a residential area on the Patterson side of Lakeview Avenue, where cars were speeding, driving up onto people's lawns, even hitting homes, damage on the homes. We looked up the accident reports and it was pretty astounding in terms of number of accidents. The fact was, it was astounding to me that no fatalities or serious injuries had occurred to those accidents, but that was really just coincidental or the, the timing of when those accidents occurred. Unfortunately, so we worked on a plan to, to, as Rilda Bartlett's worked in many parts of the county and others have worked to potentially reduce the lanes on Lakeview Avenue from four down to two and also be able to use that extra space for positive recreational opportunities. But what I wanted to report on today was that unfortunately, last Friday night, a woman, a pedestrian in her 60s, lost her life on the Clifton side of Lakeview Avenue trying to cross the street. A young driver struck her. I don't have the report from the prosecutor's office, and I don't want to in any way speculate as to why that accident occurred, but it was a section of Lakeview Avenue in that part of the Clifton side where there wasn't a marked crosswalk or any kind of, and I can tell, real visibility at night for pedestrian crossing, and that scenario is very busy, even though it's two lanes, very busy with residential and commercial. So, I've asked our planning department to take a look at that section of Lakeview Avenue as well, to look at how it's marked, how it's striped, and what changes we recommend to increase pedestrian safety. But I think this is just important, a important reminder, regardless of how this accident occurred, what happened, when we talk about our county roads, we talk about efforts, it's not just about paving roads, it's not just about potholes, which is important, absolutely, but it's about increasing safety. And sometimes when we make these changes, I've heard from many neighbors who don't want to go down from four lanes down to two, because they worry about potential consequences of people like changes, but the ability to slow down traffic in areas where we have residential homes and pedestrians is most important, and I think it underlines what we need to be looking at, what we have been doing and continue to do as a county to increase pedestrian safety and safety on all our roadways.
Thank you very much, Director. And thanks for that update. So, I'd actually want to point out that we've got two items on today's consent agenda that relate to that work. K-36 would enable us to improve safe streets of transit in West Milford, and the late starter that was announced, K-38, is actually, if we get that state funding, would enable us to improve those pedestrian safety facilities right along Lakeview Avenue. And that's a work that we're consistently starting to, continuing to work on. And those are two examples of ways in which we're able to use and leverage county funds alongside of state or federal funding for important projects. Two other examples of that have been Passaic County Tech, where we've been able to leverage $15 million in state funding for our new STEM academy, and the Community College, where we were able to receive, I think it was about $7 million two years ago in state funding for expansion and improvement at the Community College, which now includes our one, complete One Aqu campus as well. I wanted to mention that both of those educational institutions are also supported by foundations, and both of them are having golf outings next week. So, if anybody out there watching or anybody here today is a golfer, on Monday, you can support the PCTI Education Foundation with a golf outing at the Jersey Country Club in Wayne. And next Wednesday, the 3rd of October, you can support the Passaic County Community College Foundation at its 16th annual golf outing at the Black Bear Golf Club in Franklin. I don't golf, but if those are good courses, by all means, and you would enjoy the day, support those institutions, and you can find out more by calling our offices right here at the Freeholder Board. So, thank you very much.
No communications? Have promotions open up the public portion of the meeting? James and Zocker?
Rilda Zocker?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozara?
Yes.
So, our director of our department, Pat Shirley, in cooperation with the Susan G. Coman Foundation and of course, us, the Chosen Freeholders, is having a women's wellness expo on September 29th from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is a very important event for women from all over the county. Shirley has arranged to have buses driving through the county to pick up any women that want to come to the wellness expo, and everything there is going to be free. So, what, you know, I guess the whole concept of this is that no matter where you live, okay, you are supposed to be, have access to great health care, and sometimes that doesn't always happen to some people for whatever reason. The quality of health care that every woman deserves. The Susan G. Coman Foundation not only raises awareness for breast cancer studies, but they also look at healthy lifestyles because healthy lifestyles affect women and some diseases they might get. So, Shirley's worked very hard on this, I know that. We invite you, if you know anybody, if you drive yourself, that's great too, but please take advantage of this. There's going to be doctors here, there's going to be free health screenings, you're going to be able to talk to professionals in the field about anything that might concern you, there's going to be a Kid Zone, a fitness and active lifestyle seminar, there's special guests and vendors. It's going to be a great opportunity for women to get access to great health care. So, if you yourself want to go, or you know anyone who wants to go, if you want to know the schedule of the buses that will be picking women up from around the county from top to bottom, we have all that available to you, and if you have any questions, you can actually call Shirley's office to find out like, well, what's a bus going to be in my neighborhood? Shirley, what's the phone number? 973-881-4396 is the phone number. So, you, huh? 881-4396. But no, it's a, it's a great opportunity for women to get that access to the home care that they might need or not otherwise have the opportunity to access. So, I invite all women to please attend.
Okay, Director, I have a report from Campo. It is numbers in my turn or anybody else? I don't want, I don't have stage information.
No, no, no.
Sure? We have, we, Campo serviced 2,523 students this summer and 441 counselors and 131 seniors. We're having a plan for the purveyance being done. We have a couple of legal problems, but nothing is amenable, so it should be done by next year. And just a report that we did meet with West Milford about a possible sidewalk project coming on, so a lot to be done before that, but that'd be a great project beneficial to all in West Milford.
Would anybody else?
Freeholder Director, I wanted to report to the board that many of you know that I've been working in the South Patterson neighborhood where I live, the Lakeview section, that Lakeview Avenue, which is a county road, I've been working for, since I've become a freeholder, I've heard from many of my neighbors who live in the area who were telling me about cars that were going on Lakeview Avenue, which is a four-lane road in a residential area on the Patterson side of Lakeview Avenue, where cars were speeding, driving up onto people's lawns, even hitting homes, damage on the homes. We looked up the accident reports and it was pretty astounding in terms of number of accidents. The fact was, it was astounding to me that no fatalities or serious injuries had occurred to those accidents, but that was really just coincidental or the, the timing of when those accidents occurred. Unfortunately, so we worked on a plan to, to, as Rilda Bartlett's worked in many parts of the county and others have worked to potentially reduce the lanes on Lakeview Avenue from four down to two and also be able to use that extra space for positive recreational opportunities. But what I wanted to report on today was that unfortunately, last Friday night, a woman, a pedestrian in her 60s, lost her life on the Clifton side of Lakeview Avenue trying to cross the street. A young driver struck her. I don't have the report from the prosecutor's office, and I don't want to in any way speculate as to why that accident occurred, but it was a section of Lakeview Avenue in that part of the Clifton side where there wasn't a marked crosswalk or any kind of, and I can tell, real visibility at night for pedestrian crossing, and that scenario is very busy, even though it's two lanes, very busy with residential and commercial. So, I've asked our planning department to take a look at that section of Lakeview Avenue as well, to look at how it's marked, how it's striped, and what changes we recommend to increase pedestrian safety. But I think this is just important, a important reminder, regardless of how this accident occurred, what happened, when we talk about our county roads, when we talk about efforts, it's not just about paving roads, it's not just about potholes, which is important, absolutely, but it's about increasing safety. And sometimes when we make these changes, I've heard from many neighbors who don't want to go down from four lanes down to two, because they worry about potential consequences of people like changes, but the ability to slow down traffic in areas where we have residential homes and pedestrians is most important, and I think it underlines what we need to be looking at, what we have been doing and continue to do as a county to increase pedestrian safety and safety on all our roadways.
Thank you very much, Director. And thanks for that update. So, I'd actually want to point out that we've got two items on today's consent agenda that relate to that work. K-36 would enable us to improve safe streets of transit in West Milford, and the late starter that was announced, K-38, is actually, if we get that state funding, would enable us to improve those pedestrian safety facilities right along Lakeview Avenue. And that's a work that we're consistently starting to, continuing to work on. And those are two examples of ways in which we're able to use and leverage county funds alongside of state or federal funding for important projects. Two other examples of that have been Passaic County Tech, where we've been able to leverage $15 million in state funding for our new STEM academy, and the Community College, where we were able to receive, I think it was about $7 million two years ago in state funding for expansion and improvement at the Community College, which now includes our one, complete One Aqu campus as well. I wanted to mention that both of those educational institutions are also supported by foundations, and both of them are having golf outings next week. So, if anybody out there watching or anybody here today is a golfer, on Monday, you can support the PCTI Education Foundation with a golf outing at the Jersey Country Club in Wayne. And next Wednesday, the 3rd of October, you can support the Passaic County Community College Foundation at its 16th annual golf outing at the Black Bear Golf Club in Franklin. I don't golf, but if those are good courses, by all means, and you would enjoy the day, support those institutions, and you can find out more by calling our offices right here at the Freeholder Board. So, thank you very much.
No communications? Have promotions open up the public portion of the meeting? James and Zocker?
Rilda Zocker?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozara?
Yes.
Anyone who wishes to be heard can come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Iris Rivera, and I live in Little Fols, New Jersey, 63 weber, and I have a name list.
Back in Soto, on the 163th Summit Street in Patterson, New Jersey.
We are here tonight because we are parents with special needs childrens. We are the, we work together, Miss Soto, have enough for our organization, and we knock a lot of doors to provide service for our childrens. It's very hard to understand when you have a kid with a disability or someone doesn't understand your kid. We went to Boys and Girls Club, we went to others' agency, and they don't enroll our kids because they are autistic, they don't have the facility, one under wheelchair, Down Syndrome, et cetera. We're here tonight to, we provide you some kind of forum for other counties that they use, offer service for special needs, and we want you to see what even in some county are doing for our students, for students and childrens and young adults. The State County, I called today and I asked them, how many children do you have in a district in a special education, and they gave me this amount. You can ask again. Thirteen, 703 children that are in the district with special needs, the State County.
Do you want to say? Do you want to say?
This morning, I called Passaic County District, and I asked the baby, I was going to be here for 30, and I told him, can you give me the, the amount, how many children are in the special education, and they gave me that total. You can call them and find out, send them home, but that's the numbers. I'm going to ask Miss Soto to talk to you about the service that we're looking for.
Okay, to my understanding, there's no recreation activity in Patterson. I'm going to address Patterson because I'm a Pattersonian. There's not one recreation activity in the city of Patterson. I went to the Boys and Girls Club with both of my children that are on the autism spectrum, and there was no accommodations for them. And according to the American with Disability Act, there has to be accommodation for these children. I had to pull teeth for my children to get an accommodation, basically just to come out in 30 minutes earlier because they're going to STEM and they're going to run around, and those were the only accommodations they could give me, just for my two children to attend swimming classes with neurotypical children due to the fact that there's no programs in the city of Patterson. I did, I contacted the mayor, I had a meeting with the mayor, again, back to, there's no funds. And then I spoke to Benjamin, Benjamin, I think that's his name, Benji, and he said he was going to try to get the funds because he is in charge of recreation. So, again, we're coming and pleading to you to see what can you do for our children with special needs pertaining recreation activities. Thank you.
You have to remember, it's very hard, you know, like Miss Soto said, that we don't have a gym to go to, we don't have, right now, people play soccer, and you have a kid with a wheelchair or a Down Syndrome, they can't even do anything. You know, think about it, you know, we are part of the society, we are part of the city, and I don't live in Patterson, I used to live in Patterson, I live in Little Fols, but I want to let you know that it's very hard for me, my son is 17, and to be home 2:30 to turn on, watching TV, nothing to do for me, it's very hard. You know, it's nothing out there for our children. I know you provide for the single mom, for the senior, for the shelters, you provide for the people who are needs, but what happened to the special needs? You know, we are part of the community, you have to understand that, that no matter what, they are our citizens too. And think about this, you know, they are here, they're going to come, young adult, and we, you know, I know you have the senior center, each municipality have a senior center. I don't want to put my son, when he's 18, in there. Think about this, you know, what can I do for our children when they graduate? Some of them can work, other ones cannot work, but, you know, if you have a building or you have something to offer, you know, we can work together and, you know, we can come back in a, in a meeting private, and we can meet with you guys and tell them what we need and what we're looking for privately, and then we can come up with ideas and work together, I think. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Could you just write down your name and address, please, on the paper that's here? Is your paper there? No.
Over here. Okay.
I've got a little thing going on in my throat tonight, but Aunt Schnecker, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey, I'm here tonight to, one, tell you I'm glad to see that good things are happening over at Camp Park with the new educational trail that's being worked on. I'm also here to inquire as to Resolution 4 that you're voting on tonight about authorizing boating concession services for the County of Passaic Parks Department, and I'd like to inquire how that might impact the Riparian Shoreline Restoration Area that I know the Friends of Garrett Mountain Reservation and some master gardens too are going to be working on, on the shorelines of Barbers Pond, so I am curious about finding out more about that. And now, my own opinion. Public access to order for personal use of boats, kayaks, and canoes is great, you know, should be encouraged throughout across the state. And bring some in sometimes for nature exploration or, you know, exercise programs, youth programs, bring them in, that'd be great. But years ago, I was hired by Passaic County, I worked for the county, and I was one of the people hired to work at the boat concession that was there. And in order to work with the horses that I loved, I had to work at the boat concession, which never happened because the county abandoned it when they found out the high cost of the insurance. It was called Somebody's Folly, I can't remember the person's name. The boats went into storage for years, and we were left with ugly floating foam and metal